All right, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order. It's an emergency meeting called for May 1st, 2020. It's 5:30 PM. And a couple of us are here in person. Or are we all, Mr. Sund? Are all of us here tonight, council members?
Why don't we do a roll call first, Deputy Speaker?
Are they on? They're in the, they're on the...
I believe the roll call will provide that.
We'll do a roll call.
Okay.
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson.
Okay, here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
Councilmember Hamm.
Here.
Councilmember Ward.
Aye.
All right, so we've got a quorum.
Okay, excellent. And since we're here, I would like to ask Councilmember James to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. United States of America. To the republic of which one nation, one nation, God, and to the liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Councilmember James. All right, well, since this is an emergency meeting, I'm going to have us adjourn to the closed session discussion. Do we have any public comments first?
Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson, I do have one comment for before closed session.
Yes?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, before you do that, the council will need to vote to ratify the findings that justify an emergency meeting. You have to find that there's a crippling activity or other, I'm sorry, crippling disaster, other activity that severely impairs public health and safety, and that prompt action is due necessary to that threat.
Okay, I'll go ahead and do that.
And then to have a closed session, you'll need a separate unanimous vote. So if you could consider articulating and then making those findings as a body, and then, and then voting to adjourn the closed session, we'll have to track that and see unanimous vote with four of you voting.
Okay. And would it be appropriate, Scott, to read the information that you had provided to council about convening the emergency meeting?
Yes, would you please do that, or I can? Either way.
I'll be happy to read that, thank you. "To convene the emergency meeting, a majority of the council will need to explain how these findings are met. One, the council needs to discuss an emergency which shall be defined as a crippling activity or other activity that severely impairs public health, safety. Number two, prompt action is necessary due to the disruption or threatened disruption of public facilities." And that's item, closed session, item 1A. And do I have a motion to ratify those presented findings?
Second.
Do I have a motion? Would you like to make a motion, Councilmember James? That wasn't my motion. Would you like to make a motion? No? You'd like to make a motion?
Make a motion to, to go into emergency meeting.
And ratify those findings.
And ratify those findings.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, we have a motion by Councilmember James. And, yes, Scott?
Madam Mayor Pro Tem, before you do that, if I, if I could, I don't want to put words in the mouth of the motion maker or the second, but other cities that have done this today and yesterday, found that the governor's order itself was an activity that severely impaired the public health and safety, and that the citizenry's response to that might also be something that gave rise to an emergency. You can consider those and add those to the motion if you'd like.
If I may though, that's in the public, said, public meeting is the discussion of the city's response to governor's order concerning beach closures in Orange County. So you'd like to include that in the closed session as well? Just in the motion?
Okay.
Okay. Fair enough. All right. So would, would you like to, I think that motion says, do you, would you like to repeat the motion, or just have a second? It's a mouthful. Okay. All right. And Councilmember Hamm, does your second still stand?
Perpetual.
Thank you very much. All right, so let's take a roll call. Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
And I'm an aye, so that passes unanimously four to zero for us to go to closed session.
I do have one public comment in the move.
Oh, you do? Okay, one public comment? Yes, please, Laura, thank you.
All right, so one comment from Brad Malamud. "The proposed 5:00 PM meeting as illegal government code 54956.5A requires a work stoppage or crippling activity or disaster or destruction or threatened or actual terrorism. None of these exist. Any action will be void. This illegal gambit was tried yesterday. It is illegal today. Allowing the meeting to proceed without the predicate emergency is an abuse of power. It may be a criminal act of bad faith violation of each council member and official's oath of office. Be careful if you hold this emergency meeting. There's no emergency as a notice session is set for 6:00 PM."
Thank you, Laura, for reading that. And City Attorney Scott Smith, would you like to respond to that for council, so that we know that when we are going into closed session legally, and that any decisions tonight that we make can't be undone as a result? Thank you.
Yeah, thanks, Madam Mayor Pro Tem. The considerations that I had you consider and affirm earlier, I think, address Mr. Malamud's comment. The, the beach is closed immediately. There's, I think, a good argument based on the notice that Councilmember James sent out, that, that, that is an imminent threat to that, to that asset, and that the public's response to that might also be considered an imminent threat. You have noticed a special meeting for 6 o'clock today that isn't dependent upon that finding. And so what I would suggest is that when, that you go ahead, as you voted, I think you can legitimately do that, but when 6 o'clock rolls around, you can convene that special meeting concurrently with this meeting, and then that addresses any, any issue that Mr. Malamud's raised.
Okay, that, that sounds good. Thank you very much for providing that legal opinion, Scott. All right, are there any other public comments, Laura?
No more public comments. We just need a motion to recess.
Okay. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, yeah, you're going to vote to adjourn to closed session, right? And that needs the unanimous vote in an emergency meeting. I just wanted to note that for you.
Okay, wonderful. Do we have a motion to adjourn to closed session?
Motion to adjourn to closed session.
All second. And can we take a roll call? Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tem Ferguson's an aye, so that passes unanimous, and we'll adjourn to closed session.
Scott, is that you again?
Hi, yes. Scott, you're back on, how are you?
Bob, you're still on?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Did we lose somebody else? Scott just dropped again, so give us one sec.
Okay, so everyone, I'll go ahead and do a roll call. Make sure everybody's back on for the special meeting. Calling the special meeting to order at 6:15. And I apologize to those tuning in tonight. Our closed session went a little over. We had some very good questions from council members. Okay, so let's go ahead and take roll call. Councilmember Ward.
Present.
Councilmember Hamm.
Here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
And Mayor Fortem Ferguson here. So, let's go ahead and ask for, let's see, a motion? Do I have a motion for waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
I'll make a motion to waive reading of all resolutions and ordinances.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. Councilmember Hamm.
Bill here.
Okay, wonderful. And Mayor Fortem Ferguson. So, that passes 4-0. All right, so the next item is discussion of city's response to governor's order concerning beach closures in Orange County.
Scott, is that you again?
Hi, yes. Scott Smith back on. How are you?
Bob, you're still on?
Yes, I am.
Thank you. Did we lose somebody else? Drop it. Scott just dropped again, so give us one sec.
Okay, so everyone, I'll go ahead and do a roll call. Make sure everybody's back on for the special meeting. Calling the special meeting to order at 6:15. And I apologize to those tuning in tonight. Our closed session went a little over. We had some very good questions from council members. Okay, so let's go ahead and take roll call. Councilmember Ward.
I'm here.
Councilmember Hamm.
Here.
Councilmember James.
Here.
And Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson here. So let's go ahead and ask for, let's see, a motion? Do I have a motion for waiving reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances?
I'll make a motion to waive reading of all resolutions and ordinances.
Thank you. Do I have a second? I'll second that motion. Councilmember Hamm, councilmember Ward, do we still have you on the line?
I just seconded that.
Oh, great. Okay, wonderful. Thank you so much. So let's go ahead and take a roll call. Councilmember Ward.
Oh.
How many roll calls are we going to do today?
We're going to do roll calls. Councilmember Hamm. Councilmember James.
Bill here.
Okay, wonderful. And Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson. So that passes 4-0. All right, so the next item is discussion of city's response to governor's order concerning beach closures in Orange County. Laura, do we have any public comments?
Madam Mayor Pro Tim, this is, sorry, Madam Mayor Pro Tim, this is Scott Smith, the city attorney. Could I just have you let us announce that no reportable action was taken in the closed session and then adjourn the emergency meeting? That one can end and you can pick up with this one if that's okay procedurally.
Very good. Thank you.
We adjourn the emergency meeting and make that report.
Okay.
There was no reportable action.
Okay, so we'll adjourn the emergency meeting. Okay. All right, thank you very much, Scott.
Thank you. Thanks for that pause.
Do we have a second for that motion of mine?
Second.
All right. Thank you. That passes. Okay, so do we have any public comments for discussion of city's response to the governor's order concerning beach closures in Orange County?
We have several public comments, yes.
Okay, wonderful. Can we go ahead and ask you to please read those, Laura? Thank you.
Sure. Let's see here.
Do we just have a motion to second with no vote? And if so, what was the motion to second for that wasn't very clear?
Oh, for the motion? For what? We waived the reading of full resolutions and then we adjourned the emergency meeting into the special meeting after that. Are we having a problem with the phone?
Jean just seconded a motion that, no, Jean just seconded a motion that you made, but then you didn't take a vote from it.
Oh, would you like me to take a roll call? I thought you were criticizing too many roll calls tonight. Okay. All right, so let's go ahead. I made a motion to adjourn the emergency meeting and return to the special meeting. And councilmember James seconded that motion. And I'll go ahead and do roll call. All right, councilmember Ward.
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember Hamm?
Aye.
Thank you. Councilmember James?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson is an aye. And that passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, Laura, would you like to start the public comments, please?
Sure, so second item on the agenda after motion to waive reading in full of all resolutions and ordinances, we're moving on to consideration of the governor's order for beach closures in Orange County. We've got several public comments, so I'll go ahead and get started. First one is from Kevin Schultz. To members of the city council and all to whom it may concern, I believe the time has come to move beyond the fear of this virus and begin the process of getting back to our everyday lives. Yesterday's statement from Governor Newsom to close the beaches, parks, and trails of Orange County were cowardly, inappropriately targeted, and unconstitutional. He not only signed out the citizens, he not only singled out the citizens of Orange County, but also the citizens of San Clemente by failing to acknowledge our efforts as a community in combating this virus and quite frankly, our success in managing it. Right now, Orange County hospitals are operating well under capacity. As a matter of fact, they are just barely reaching half capacity. Of the 23 hospitals in Orange County reporting to the Medical Health Operational Area Coordination, only 57% of available beds are being used. The COVID-19-related ICU admissions continue to drop and hospitals are actually furloughing health care workers here in Orange County due to low census. If that is not evidence of our success as a community in preventing the spread, flattening the curve, and not overwhelming the health care system, then I do not know what is. Last week, you collectively decided to reopen the beach, reopen the ocean beach and trail for exercise purposes, and today you have the opportunity to do that again and so much more. I urge you to stand up for our governor and fight for what is right. Reopen the beaches, reopen business, reopen the opportunity to pursue the American dream. Set an example for other communities around us. There's no doubt this can be conducted and completed in a safe, healthy way. We can do this together. Thank you for your time and for sharing this at tonight's council meeting. Kevin Schultz. Next comment is from Erin Laylor. Excuse me. Dear City Council, we lived at T Street for 25 years. Never thought I would see this, never thought I would say this, but I'm happy the beaches closed. The chaos is unsafe conditions you created by blocking off parking on Esplita and Cristobal and forcing vehicles to park on the small residential streets of Vista Marina, La Rambla, and T Street was ridiculous. Out of town cars speeding down our small, non-sidewalk residential streets from 0600 to 11:30 PM was like 4th of July every day, including the trash and blocked driveways. When you reopen the beaches, please reopen parking that is safe for everyone. P.S. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson and former Mayor Bain for always taking the time to respond to our emails. Nice to know someone cares. Next email is from Tommy Gervais. Please consider the following points prior to making your decision. Governor is only able to pass state laws, not laws related to individual counties or cities. The governor's orders are in place to prevent beachgoers from sunbathing on beaches, which is in accordance with the rules San Clemente has already enacted. Jurisdiction of the waterways are assigned to the federal government by the U.S. Coast Guard, which extends 15 feet past mean high tide, which means the majority of beaches in San Clemente are actually enforced under federal laws, not state laws. Next comment is from Susan Fishbach to the council. As much as we would like to walk along the beach during this time, the public at large, through their disregard for public safety, has made that impossible. We want to praise Governor Newsom for his decision to close the beaches. His decision will hopefully save lives of health care workers who would have to take care of people who congregate in large groups and become infected with COVID-19. City of San Clemente created a public health nightmare last weekend when they opened the beaches, but then did not enforce the rules they had set forth to keep the beach experience safe. The opening stipulated that people had to social distance and keep moving. Picnicking, setting up tents, congregating was not permissible. People were allowed to recreate through walking and running as long as they continued to move. This was not enforced. The beaches were meant to be open to San Clemente residents, presumably to have our residents walk to the beaches rather than drive. The no parking signs were erected but ignored by folks who are clearly not from San Clemente. The no parking was not enforced. The city had people in neon vests to monitor the entrance to Poche Beach. These poor workers were standing on the sidewalk with dozens and dozens of people walking shoulder to shoulder with them. The beachgoers were not wearing masks for the most part, not social distancing, and were dragging coolers and tents. What was the purpose of exposing these workers to high-risk environment if no enforcement was to happen? The latest, this latest action of closing the beaches is not the fault of the governor. It's the fault of the public and their decision in audit here to the rules. Thank you, Susan Fishbach. Next comment, we implore the council to follow the recent governor's order and keep the beaches in San Clemente closed. For the time being, we are residents near T Street. Past few nights, our neighborhood has been overwhelmed by people coming to the beach, sometimes in large groups, not practicing social distancing at all. Cars circled the streets for hours looking for parking areas while others parked illegally in front of red zones, fire hydrants, et cetera. Very few people were wearing masks. We tried to go out for a walk, but returned due to the huge number of cars and groups of people in our neighborhood. We have relatives with severe health issues already and others in health care who are risking their lives to address this pandemic. Keeping people from our beloved beaches, we love them too, seems a small price to pay until there's a coordinated effort to test and trace the coronavirus. Once the beaches do reopen, we agree it should be on a trial basis during the week for shortened hours while officers help to educate people visiting the beach for walking, jogging, surfing, swimming only, and to practice social distancing and wearing masks. Thank you, Jim and Janet Hill. Next comment, dear City Council, I implore the council not to challenge the governor's order for beach closures in Orange County. The past four days have seen the highest number of hospitalizations in Orange County to date due to COVID. Let's not risk our community members and essential workers by inviting everyone to an open beach. Let's not further burden our health care system and risk further spread of the virus. Your time and resources would better serve our community by planning a safe reopening in the near future. Thank you, Sandra Lucchins. Next comment is from Karen Prescott Lefler. When the governor demands an Orange County shutdown and an emergency meeting is called, you need to show up, Mr. Hamm and Ms. Woods. Simply wish to commend both Jean James and Laura Ferguson for their support of community and concern for local businesses going under. All right, and then the rest I've got printed out here. Those all came in at the last minute. Next is from Richard Finley. We are fighting a pandemic and have a great opportunity to control it, and protesters feel their rights are violated by temporary beach closures. As a taxpaying citizen of San Clemente, I support our governor to the fullest and request, as our city's elected representatives, you all do the same. Richard Finley. Next comment is from Jeremy Niblet. This is in reference to line number one, consideration of the governor's order for beach closures in Orange County. I would like to start by commending you all for continuing to work and hold meetings during these extraordinary circumstances. However, I'd like to address the incorrect information that seems to be rhetoric of the public protest. First, it should be reiterated that Orange County has the fourth highest number of cases in California, which reported hospitalizations due to COVID-19, up 80% in April with five reported deaths today and 50 deaths to date. Furthermore, of the 3.176 million residents of Orange County, only 34,128 have been tested. That boils down to .01% of residents who have been tested. The current requirement in San Clemente is if you would like to get tested for COVID-19, as such, you need a doctor's referral to be tested. This is a terrible decision when information now shows that people are in fear of going to the doctor for even large medical symptoms such as heart problems and stroke. This information, coupled with the fact that a referral is needed to be tested, is keeping the county and our city in particular from gaining a solid idea of what numbers of infected residents are. And by now, we all know asymptomatic cases are still infectious. These numbers give a false sense of security to those who believe it's a good idea to reopen beaches, just as a week after tens of thousands descend on the beaches in Orange County during our last heat wave. May I remind you that the weather will be climbing back into the 80s by Tuesday. Nowhere in the California Constitution or the U.S. Constitution does the freedom of the citizen use of the beach to appear. In fact, in emergency scenarios, the state is doing exactly what is within its legal power to keep its residents safe. I'm sure there are those that will cite the Fifth Amendment as used in the modern interpretation of the right to travel, which is not only void in state of emergency, but was originally used for white women traveling with black men in Florida in 19, and was used to say that a loitering violation was too vague of a description and has never been used successfully in any Supreme Court in respects to moving about the streets. Please do not let the voices of the protesters sway you in doing your jobs to keep the residents of San Clemente safe. And by that, I mean fully complying with the governor of the state of California's order to close the beaches in Orange County until such time as they can be reopened in a safe manner consistent with current and local health guidelines and can be properly enforced. Please see all sources used for evidence in this statement listed under the annotation. And then there are several annotations. Next comment from Sandra Beerler. Please consider my comments regarding beach closures. At present, we are fortunately spared the ravages of the CV-19, but this could change at any time. All should remember our history lesson of 1918 and the Spanish Flu pandemic. Please continue this course to protect our residents and families. Please keep us healthy and safe so we can in turn support our business community, close beaches and beach trail, close adjacent residential streets, allowing residents only parking and traffic. This is where the crowds are not social distancing. Allow for modified use of beaches and trail, open beaches and trails for morning and evening use, only allowing surfers and exercises only. Next comment from Camille Wyatt. Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson, city councilmember, San Clemente is a beach town. Our beaches provide a plethora of physical activity, both active and non-passive, and are essential for our well-being. We have all been responsible and practiced social distancing and been respectful of others going on seven weeks now. Governor Newsom's order to close all Orange County beaches is a major overreach and most probably unlawful. Please instruct the city attorney Scott Smith to immediately file a restraining order and seek an injunction against the order. If necessary, and if it's more beneficial to the city and its residents, please join the cities of Dana Point and Huntington Beach for their legal actions against the governor. We are all counting on you to do the right thing and protect our constitutional rights to enjoy our public beaches.
Next speaker is from Pete Wilkins. San Clemente City Council, as residents of the T Street Beach neighborhood, we've been most impacted by the crowds coming to the beach. Aside from the very rough opening last Saturday, the enforcement of the exercise restriction on the beach during the day has been effective. Unfortunately, this has pushed relaxing between swimming and surfing sessions to the residential streets. We've seen tailgate parties, day-use campers, and loitering on private property. Perhaps some enforcement for our neighborhoods could be implemented. Our main reason for writing today is that we, excuse me, that the situation after dark the last three nights with the bioluminescent display has been utter chaos. Large crowds on the bluff and at the beach, and very little social distancing, and gridlock traffic on all surrounding streets. Lots of noise late into the night. If an emergency arises either on the beach or with residents, it will be extremely difficult to get first responders to the scene in a reasonable timeframe. Perhaps streets closures similar to what has been done on the 4th of July are in order. Thank you for your consideration, Pete and Debbie Wilkins. Next speaker, Anne Marie Hines. Good evening, City Council. The Declaration of Independence states in the second paragraph that mankind are more disposed to suffer while evils are sufferable. Those who are healthy are unjustly suffering by being told to stay inside and socially distance. Last night, I witnessed true American patriotism throughout our small beachside city. I took my son out at sunset thinking there would be no one else outside to see the bioluminescence as a science lesson. Instead, the streets were crowded with families and people everywhere. Surfers and boogie boards were running to the waters as if the surf was up. It was like the 4th of July, a wonderful experience. It made me proud to live in San Clemente. Science does not prove that quarantining the healthy and social distancing work. Like other parts of our bodies, our immune system needs exercise. They need to be outside and to be physically fit. Eight states and Sweden, along with other countries, kept open, they kept their businesses regular, which was the Constitution's intent. Your job is to protect our liberty. The death rate from COVID-19, according to recent statistics, is .03% in California. It is statistically in line with the flu virus. Unemployment, however, is a vertical line heading skyward. Be brave, give us our liberty back, and open the beaches and businesses along our neighbors. Huntington Beach and Dana Point who voted yesterday to pursue legal action against the order. Thank you, Anne Marie Hines. Next speaker, Dr. Ryan Anderson. Members of the city council, I was on the freed, I was on the feed from the previous meeting where the city discussed beach access restoration. I truly feel the actions of the council were in complete compliance with the state mandated stay-at-home order. As much as I'd love to get my kids to hang out on the sand for the day, I understand the need for that to be paused for the time being. Active use is an effective way to allow citizens to get exercise they need. Continuing to reduce available space is cramping the citizens of San Clemente, of which many rely on public spaces as our property sizes are smaller. Many of the patients I am seeing at my clinic here in San Clemente are dealing with stress levels that I've never seen before. Less activity is contributing to this factor. Not to mention the evidence supporting sunlight and this particular virus, as well as the benefit to the immune system that we get from fresh air and at least 15 minutes of direct sun exposure daily. The order from Governor Newsom is a direct slap in the face of this council and other cities and local peace officers who have worked so hard to keep us safe and healthy during this time. I hope you will join with other OC beach towns in fighting this order and choose not to enforce the order. Keep active access to the beach open, excuse me, the beach, ocean, and trails. Thank you for your consideration, Dr. Ryan Anderson, D.C. Next public speaker, Tara Hamilton. I'm submitting my comments for tonight's meeting regarding beach closures. As I am sure you are all aware, we as a community pay a lot to live by the beach, a natural resource. I'm sure you also know that our governor has unfairly targeted our community. Sheriff Barnes has made a statement as well that this is overreach. We have a Huntington, we have a Huntington in Newport and Dana Point, all filing lawsuits against the overreach. Harmeet Dillon is also filing a civil rights lawsuit for this infringement on our liberties. As native here, who has lived in San Clemente for over 46 years, I request that our city also file a lawsuit, or better yet, do not enforce the action against the residents who choose to still go out in nature and the beach or at the beach to get sunlight and swim in the vast free ocean. We know that the UV lights kill the virus. There is no threat by going to the beach, but there is, but there will be a huge threat to people's mental health by having no other outlet other than walking up and down their street. Please oppose this with every ounce of your bean. You know it's wrong. Thank you, Tara. Next speaker is Christina Krich. Dear council, I encourage you to support our neighbors in Dana Point and Huntington Beach and join forces in resisting the unfair targeting of our county by the governor Newsom. With empty local hospitals, furloughing staff, and a death rate of 0.017, the governor's actions are not only irrational but unconstitutional. Their lawsuits are mounting against him because people in cities are recognizing his gross negligence and abuse of power. Please put people over politics and reopen the city. The cure is going to be far diddlier than the cause. The governor's actions are endangering the people far more than this COVID flu. To Chris and Kathy, it's not too late to humble yourselves and change teams. Many people were fooled. We can forgive you for that. It takes a strong person to realize that. Hope you both are strong. Sincerely, Christina. Next public speaker is David E. Nemeth. Please vote to simply maintain the current order in place for San Clemente, which is to limit beach access to the permitted activities while prohibiting passive gatherings. This is the perfect compromise for now and can be reconsidered for further expansion on a weekly basis. There is no reason to modify the local order in the face of the governor's overreaching and illegal targeting of Orange County. Adjinder to the Dana Point and Huntington Beach TRO actions is also appropriate. Thank you. David Nemeth, Jr., Esquire, and Family, 5101 Costa. you. David Nemeth Jr., Esquire, and Family, 5101 Costa Restico, San Clemente, California. Next public speaker, Mary R. Thiet. Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson and City Council, I agree 100% with Georgia Smith. She put it so succinctly. My only add would be to review what happened at T Street this past Tuesday and Wednesday evening, starting around 8:00 PM. Throngs of people running down Esplanade and Crystal Ball over the bridge to the beach to see the light show. Went on for over two hours each night. Many people were not wearing masks nor social distancing. If you would like to see some of the videos that were captured, I'm happy to share. Getting through Phase 1 ASAP in order to move to Phase 2 should be our priority. Thank you, Rita Thiet Scooter.
All right, next comment is from Jen Bishop. Hello, I'm writing to address meeting item number two. I urge the City Council to stand up against the targeted discrimination and tyranny and keep the San Clemente beaches open. The beaches have not been overly crowded and all science demands to the beach being one of the safest places during this pandemic. Large outdoor spaces with wind, sunshine, which kills the virus in one and a half minutes in the healing energy that the beach gives humans. Orange County has effectively flattened the curve and has a very low number of cases of the virus. People who are not comfortable with the current levels are free to remain home, but those who are healthy should be free to enjoy the public land, which is here for our use. We should not allow our governor to restrict our freedoms just because he thinks he can. There's no science to show it is necessary or helpful. Dear City of San Clemente, City Council, I've lived here in San Clemente for 15-plus years in the T Street area. Governor Newsom's request to close our beaches is not fair to the residents of our community. Our beaches have the restrictions in place with no chairs, coolers, etc. Therefore, no gathering unlike the beaches of Newport and Huntington. We are now at the end of Week 7 of the stay-at-home order, and residents have done a very good job of staying home. It's very important to all that they can get out to exercise and regain just a little bit of normal in their lives again. Let us not break the spirit of all the good people that chose to use our beaches they so love. Please do the right thing and keep our beaches open. Peg, just Peg, there's no last name. Next comment is from Saboni Maj. I'm concerned citizen of the state of California and a resident of the city of San Clemente. I hereby voice my vote in favor of consideration of the governor's order to close beaches. I'm voting to uphold and obey the order of the governor of the state of California for the beach closure in Orange County until the governor of the state of California lifts and removes said order. Your consideration to my vote is greatly appreciated. Next is from Molly Lockwood. Thank you, representatives, for working to ensure that San Clemente residents can enjoy our beaches safely. Please continue to support safe use of our beaches and coastal resources within social distancing guidelines. The photos from Newport and Huntington Beach last weekend do not represent our lived experience or ability to safely participate in ocean recreation here in San Clemente. Thank you to our lifeguards, public officials, and community members who have advocated for safe beach access and compliance with local and state health directives. We can open beaches safely if we all work together. Keep the beaches open for surfing. Thank you. Next comment is from Frances Blatner. Please don't let Pelosi's nephew Newsom close our beaches. They are public beaches, and we should be allowed to use them. He's just being the bully, saying I'm the governor. So what? He doesn't live here, and he shouldn't be regulating our beaches or parks or anything else. Next comment is from Susan Brewer. The economy is vitally important to our community and nation. The economy is our infrastructure for food, medicine, and commerce. It's necessary for everyday living. People like myself and family members contribute to the economy by working and paying taxes. Our health is our wealth. We are able to function in our jobs and pay taxes when we are healthy. This places health at the very top of our living requirements. I would love to go to the beach and forget there is a world pandemic occurring now, but that is counterproductive. Our short-cloaked neighborhood was recently inundated with people not following social distancing guidelines nor wearing masks. They also were parking in our neighborhood, leaving another area of possible virus contact. The influx of people was caused by the open beach, just the opposite of social distancing and reducing our problems. Reality is that many people are paying the ultimate price of this pandemic. Proven methods are reducing infections. Unfortunately, many protesters are not following social distancing guidelines nor wearing masks. This places all in further jeopardy whether or not they support the protest. Our health experts are stating that further shelter in place time is required. We require healthy workers to restart our economy. Suggested meeting agenda items to recover our health and economy, ensuring that residents are fed and have living accommodations. Essential workers have necessary protective items such as face masks and gloves. Making recommendations for essential store safety, such as requesting masks for all visitors. Deciding on assembly requirements for everyone, including protesters, such as social distancing, masks, and limiting numbers. Good health and wealth to all. Susan Brewer.
Next speaker is from Lisa Hogan. Governor Newsom's order on all Orange County businesses is government overreach, and all or nothing approach is not what the residents of San Clemente need. Meeting halfway to keep state beaches closed and our city beaches open with exercise use only is fair and responsible. Respectfully, Lisa Hogan. Next speaker, Pete Coran. Dear City Council, the governor's order to close any OC beaches is politically motivated and obvious abuse of power. Please consider joining the cities of Dana Point and Huntington Beach and filing for an emergency injunction against the governor's edict. Please also consider advising the chief police services not to enforce the governor's beach closure order. Thank you, Pete Coran. Next speaker is Debbie Zonos. Good evening, Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson and City Councilmembers. San Clemente needs to let Governor Newsom know that he cannot take control of our local government. We need to do what the cities of Huntington Beach and Newport Beach have done and take legal action, telling the governor that he cannot dictate how and when we want to open our beaches. This overreaching needs to stop. We as citizens have complied with all of the state orders for the past six weeks. He does not appreciate the sacrifices that we as citizens have made. If the city doesn't take a stand, these draconian laws will continue to be imposed. Next speaker is Mark M. The city must fight to keep our beaches open. At a minimum, the city should not enforce the rule. The overwhelming majority are following the social distancing rules and should not be penalized for the actions of a few. The city should not be part of this insanity. Next speaker is Christina Cosi. Dear Council, I urge the City Council to please disregard this ridiculous abuse of power from the governor. The tax-paying citizens are being treated like prisoners in a communist country instead of the free citizens of the United States that we are. Since when do free citizens have our rights stripped away because the governor feels different than most of the citizens? Since the beginning, the experts have said that the virus will not survive in heat or sunlight. It has been said that these same experts, that it is much more likely to catch the virus standing in line at the grocery store. This crazy man, who clearly is pissed off because people went to the beach and didn't listen to his advice, is now going to show us by punishing us like a father would his children. Since when do we close down the state and the country on what one thinks is going to happen? They have been wrong since the beginning, and hard-working citizens are losing their homes, cars, livelihoods, life savings, and our minds. City Council, please represent and stand up for the citizens of the city that you work for and represent. You should be looking out for and demanding the things that we want in our town. We elect you to carry out the laws we, the people, vote on, not others' personal opinions. Keep our beaches open and open all local businesses. Enough devastation has already occurred. Represent the people of San Clemente and fight for us like we expected when we put you in office. Thank you, Christina Cosi, San Clemente resident. I have two cards from Christina Cosi. So I'm gonna, actually, I have... Last public speaker is Bradley Van Dolk. San Clemente Councilmembers, it is incredibly disappointing that after the careful consideration and planning from our council, the excellent job of supervision and work done by the lifeguards, park rangers, and sheriff officers, as well as the majority of our fellow citizens, that the governor of California shuts down a vital part of what makes our community and what it is by shutting down the beaches and parks. As a San Clemente resident and nearly daily visitor to the beach, it is astonishing to me how the governor unilaterally closed the Orange County beaches to its residents when there is no evidence that doing so will prevent the transmission of COVID-19. I urge the City Council to write a letter of protest and ideally join the legal fight with Huntington Beach and other Orange County beach communities against this punitive order. Thank you, Bradley G. Dendolk.
Then we've had just a few more comments come in via email, so I'll continue. Next comment is from Brian Murphy. Dear City Council, social distancing should be voluntarily not enforced by a police state. Please resist the unjust and unconstitutional mandates by Governor Newsom. Please support the Constitution. Lockdown is tyranny. Next comment is from Ryan Bork. Thank you all for showing up to this meeting. I understand there's a large public outcry for common sense guidance and leadership from all of you. I think San Clemente can set an example for other cities as we navigate the current COVID situation. There are a lot of common sense things we can do to move towards a face plan of reopening our beaches and businesses, such as wearing masks and social distancing. The federal government is not effective at helping those small businesses and gig workers that depend on all of us. San Clemente should stand strong and stick into the council's decisions, even if that means overriding the governor. We are one town working together to combat the virus and preserve our city when the crisis subsides. Again, thank you for all that you do to manage the situation. We all appreciate you. Sincerely, Ryan Bork. Next comment is from Brad Malamud. Governor Newsom made California a sanctuary state. It's time to make San Clemente a sanctuary beach. Ignore the governor's illegal edict. Those who believe it is unhealthy to go to the beach should avoid the beach. Liberty, freedom, not governmental control. And finally, last comment is from Martin Barube. Hello, City Council. I just tried walking on the beach, and a lifeguard told me that the city manager ordered the shutdown. Who authorized the city manager to shut down the beach? Why are we bowing down to the governor? Why are we not being like Huntington Beach and Dana Point? I'm not understanding why the beaches closed this weekend. Please instruct the city manager to open the beach up again and ignore the governor's dictatorship. Stand up for what is right in ours. Otherwise, we will all just be storming the beach all weekend and causing massive headaches on a bunch of good lifeguards. Let's stand up to this crazy man. It's like he's grounding Orange County and San Clemente. Are we teenagers? Please instruct the lifeguards to back down. You know what is right here. Thank you, Martin Barube. And that is all we have for public comments.
Okay, thank you so much, Laura, for taking those. Oh, thank you. I'll second that motion, Councilmember Ham. Thank you both so much for reading those. And I'll save my comments for last, but I'll open up a discussion of the city's response to governor's order concerning beach closures in Orange County.
So I just made a motion, and you second it. We should probably take a vote.
Oh, would you like to take a vote? Okay, let's go ahead and take a vote. Roll call. Councilmember Ham?
Aye.
Councilmember Ward?
Aye.
Councilmember James?
Aye.
And Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson is aye. That passes unanimously, 4-0. All right, so let's have a discussion of this item.
This is Councilmember Ham. I'll start it off. So I'd like to address the fake news propagated by two of our councilmembers. At this point, you're acting no better than CNN and fake news. First off, you spread false information about the attendance of Councilmember Ward and my attendance this evening. You misled our community about the ability for us to reopen our businesses and restaurants. And I want to remind you that one month ago, you voted to close our beaches, and now you're crying about the governor following your lead. I want to inform you that just recently, the judge did not issue a temporary restraining order for the cities of Huntington Beach and the city of Dana Point in their legal action. While I think the governor's decision was a poor one at this point, why are we here? It seems we're only here for the two of you to collect money for your special meeting fees that we're accruing, because nothing is being accomplished. Thank you.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilmember Ham. If I may clarify, the lawsuit by the cities of Huntington Beach and Newport Beach, and then the city of Dana Point had voted to join their lawsuit. Just to clarify, one additional note by Judge Nathan Scott today, this afternoon, I'll read this out. Both cities wanted an immediate temporary restraining order against the governor's call for the closures, order for the closures in Orange County of all beaches. Judge Nathan Scott has allowed the governor's order to stand. However, this is an important point, he also ordered Governor Newsom's legal counsel to show probable cause for this action of his. Another hearing is set for May 11th. So this is far from over.
Mayor Pro Tim.
Yes, please, Councilmember James.
The reason why we're here is because there's a despot 450 miles from San Clemente who's ruling us like we're subjects, not like we're citizens. That's why we're here. This is not grandstanding. This is not lying. This is not trying to collect something. I don't know what Councilmember Ham was talking about there. But I'm sick of looking at the fences at the Pier Bowl. I'm sick of looking at the fences at North Beach. I'm sick of this shutdown that's ruining the economy of our city. And we're here to talk about what actions that we could have. Well, one action we can have for sure is, and the city attorney explained this to us earlier, we have no obligation to enforce anything as it relates to that governor's action, that governor's order. And I would also submit to you, it's even questionable to me, to many, to several attorneys who contacted me, if in fact this is even an order that he sent us. It is from the director of the governor's Office of Emergency Services. There's some question whether it's even legitimate. And I rarely agree with Mr. Malamud, but boy, it's time to talk about being a sanctuary city. If this state can be a sanctuary state on immigration, we can be a sanctuary city on our beach. So I'm not here to spread any false rumors. I'm not here to create any problems, but I am here to tell you that I'm a citizen, not a subject, and this citizen will walk on the beach this weekend. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Yes, and...
Seeing that sound like grandstanding to me.
And then follow up to the comment about what we actually have to do to comply, right? We did have some discussion, as Councilmember James says. So we do need to make sure that the public is aware of the governor's order, and that we have done, and our interim city manager did not force the beach closures today. I did hear that, and I know it gets confusing because this is a very fluid situation, and things have been changing quite rapidly. However, the governor did order the closures yesterday, just of Orange County, and the interim city manager had directed staff to place signage on just the existing fences that we have up now along the beach. We didn't fence off the beach with new fencing, just that was already there. And it reads, "Warning," with a stop sign, red with a hand, "Warning: Beaches closed pursuant to orders issued by the governor's office and the California State Department of Parks and Recreation. No activities are permitted on the beach, including sunbathing, walking, or running, or water sports." So that said, we have complied with the order there. We don't have to commit additional resources to this. So basically to not place that signage there, we would be negligent to not alert people, and yes, we would be in trouble for that. So we have complied with that. But we don't have to have security guards and fence off the whole beach and other additional resources. Thank Do we have any other comments with the discussion?
Mayor Pro Tim Ferguson?
Yes, please, Councilmember Ward.
Okay, so, you know, I listened to the governor's press conference, and I got a very different feel out of it. And even the letter from the Department of Operation of Emergency Services even states what I got out of the meeting. That this is a very temporary order in order to get guidelines in place so that these areas can be opened safely. What the governor and the state saw over the weekend at our beaches worried them, and they were very concerned, and I think they were rightfully concerned. No one called our city and asked us how the beaches went. I think for the most part, our residents are using our beaches actively. But we do have a group of residents that want to use it passively, and I believe that is in violation of the order. And I think the governor saw that we were all doing something different and wanted us all to coordinate so that we would be the same. So what this says is we understand that many Californians are eager to spend time and recreate outdoors, given the public health crisis necessitating the state's stay-at-home orders. We continue to... We continue to encourage residents to spend time outdoors in their neighborhoods and local parks that remain open for activities while maintaining safe social distance. Additionally, we are hopeful and confident that we can collaborate with local Orange County leaders to identify measures that can restore safe beach access as soon as possible. But until this time, those measures are in place, this additional step will preserve public health and safety that has proven essential. So we all got this letter addressed to us. We are trying to cooperate, and I think that's what our staff has told us, is that they are working with Laguna Beach, who, like us, was limiting use of their beach in order to preserve public health. I think San Clemente was doing the right thing, but the problem is, we were not all doing the same thing. And the county, who is between, has beaches between us and Laguna Beach, they were not doing the same thing as we were. And I think that is what has caught the attention of the state, and I think that's why we're in this. I think our staff told us that they're working with Laguna Beach on this, and we certainly have enough in place, I think, that the state is going to open these up very quickly, but we've got to get it where it's united, what we're doing. We are a general law city, and we do follow the processes of the state. What's being ignored here, and the council has all of this information, is there's four phases of opening a state. We all want to get there. We are in stage one right now, which is trying to plan, and I think it's a state of, we are just in a phase where our numbers aren't going up, but they're not going down. The one thing that I am very upset about and want to see is more testing. That is the requirement that I have been told needs to happen for these, for our state to open. What's also not being talked about by any other council members is that we are coordinating with four other states on this effort. We are coordinating with Oregon, Washington, Nevada, and the state of Colorado. I have talked to people in the state of Colorado about this, who are in charge of doing this, and they're all looking at, this is all going to be happening very soon. But I think what our state is concerned about is that when they see commingling and people recreating on the beach as if there is no virus out there, that gives them pause to where we cannot go to stage two. And that is what I think all of us, as council members, as elected officials, should be doing to encourage the public to do, so that we can get this going. I think as long as we keep saying we're mad about it, we aren't going to get there. And so I also agree that I don't think this meeting needed to be called, and we should, we should have just gone to another council meeting. This, we, the last thing I want to say, I keep hearing that, I keep hearing that the numbers aren't out there. I don't know that. I don't know that because our county is not testing everyone. I don't know that that is true, and I can't make a decision based on that, and I won't. I won't be putting the health and safety of the residents of this city in jeopardy when I don't have the numbers. I think that they're low because we aren't testing, and I think they're low because we are all staying in our homes and trying to social distance. I don't know what they're going to be when we open, but I think that's the plan, is to have the testing in place and contact tracing, and that's what we need to be talking about, not how mad we are about what the governor did, because I think we're working on the proper channels to get our beaches reopened. We were doing the right thing, and I think the state will give us the go-ahead to open. I think that's what their letter said, and I'm greatly concerned that that's not what we're seeing from our city council, that we are projecting that to our residents. I'm afraid that we're projecting chaos to them and being mad about it, and it's not going to get us opened any sooner. And so those are my comments.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Ward. Well, we have free speech, so we're all allowed to have our opinions and share those accordingly with the public and how we feel at this given time, and I respect both sides of this issue because we have heard from both tonight, too, in the public comments. But that said, I do have a question of Councilmember Ward. Thank you for your comments. Does it, does it not bother you that Orange County has been singled out and targeted, if you will, by the governor with this order?
I want to go there.
Either of you could answer, or all three of you could answer. I was just curious, just following up on Councilmember Ward's comments tonight, because I truly am. So, and that's my right to be bothered by this. I do feel that our community, and includes everyone, the employees here at the city, includes the businesses, it includes the residents, and have done an incredible job, sacrificing much to help flatten that curve. And the numbers don't lie. The facts don't lie. We have 190 COVID-19 patients in hospitals in Orange County. We have 25 operational hospitals in this county, and they are not bursting at the seams with COVID-19 patients. They're operating either below capacity or within capacity. So we cannot deny the truth of that. And in California overall, I mean, we're definitely the poster child of what to do that's excellent in terms of flattening the curve. I mean, you could watch, all the news reports have been saying that ever since the beginning, and I do give our governor a lot of credit for that. He got ahead of this, coordinated with all cities and counties, and did an exceptional job. And I do believe that this is government overreach in terms of shutting down our beaches and just specifically for Orange County, because we have done an incredible job here in Orange County, as the numbers show. And in San Clemente, our numbers have been fairly consistent over the last several weeks. I know we're at 47 now yesterday, but that is low compared to almost 66,000 people. So I just feel like we're going, you know, the governor doing this to Orange County, in particular, San Clemente, considering we have such a great plan in place. It's been discussed tonight, the active use, it's been working. And we're in the process of moving forward and being less restrictive, not more restrictive, in opening our amenities. I know I mentioned that at the April 21st meeting and our special meeting on the 28th, and I'm happy to see that we'll be bringing back several of those amenities and a plan to open up our parks and other public facilities. But I just, I just really believe that we need to stay strong, and we do need to respond to this, because I'm not okay with it. Thank you.
So Mayor Pro Tem.
Please.
I have a rhetorical question. What do we think is safer, going to the beach or riding the number-one bus to Santa Ana? You can get on the bus all day long, but you can't go to our beach. You can go to, you can go to Ralph's. You can go to Albertson's. You can go to Target, but you can't go to one of our shops on Del Mar, according to the governor. I'm very concerned about the overreach of government and the fact that this is just, this response to this particular virus is just, it's mind-boggling, and yes, it makes me mad. And you know what? I bet you a lot of people on Avonita Del Mar are mad they're losing their businesses. I bet a lot of restaurateurs are mad they're losing their businesses, you know? And a lot of families are mad because they can't use the beach. They can't walk the beach. And what's safer, walking the beach or walking the trail, if we're concerned about an airborne virus? So yes, I am mad. I acknowledge I'm mad, and that's my comment. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember James. Do we have any other discussion?
Councilmember-
Yes, please, Councilmember Ward.
Mayor Pro Tem, when you asked me to clarify, in my comments, I might have gone a little long, but I did say that I didn't believe the governor's order was appropriate for San Clemente because we were doing the right thing. We took great care in our management and closure of the beach, and then to open it back up, we took great care to use best practices. So I didn't think that that was right, and I said that. However, I think the best way forward is to use the proper channels as elected officials to work with Sacramento and clarify our rules and what our people were doing, and get our beaches back open. I don't believe that the grandstanding and holding protests and yelling and screaming at people is the way to get that done, and as elected officials, I don't believe that's what we should do. I did speak to our supervisor today, Lisa Bartlett. She said she has been working with Laguna Beach and the city of Dana Point, even though they did get in that lawsuit. You know, those are county beaches there. She is trying to work with the state to see if we can get an active recreation plan together where the governor could see that we are being responsible and we could reopen our beaches very quickly. I understand that our city manager, Bob Dunick, has also said that he has been in conversations with Laguna Beach and that we're all sharing our best practices and our rules, and we are all trying very hard to get our beaches open ASAP. These comments about the businesses and all, I don't know what we're doing here in a meeting saying that, or you just, so that we can say we're mad. But we're all concerned about the businesses, and that's why I think we really need to get on the county and be our new public health officer to get the testing done. And we haven't heard anything. We hear every week, "Thank you for your cooperation," but we want to see the testing and how that's going to happen. And if we need to get teams of people together to contact, trace people, then we'll do that. So those are my comments. I am not going to be for rioting or going after the governor. I think he was very clear when he made the statement, and the letter from OES says that they want to see our guidelines and get our beaches open very fast. I think that's where we need to go.
I thank you, Councilmember Ward. But I do want to point out that the letter we are discussing tonight is about the beaches. Thanks for getting us back on track. However, Councilmember James can speak about the businesses, if you'd like to, the small businesses, because they're severely impacted, just as you've been talking about the testing, which is not included in the letter either. So I completely want you all to speak freely, but we want to now get back on track and focus on the beaches. And you had mentioned, thank you for mentioning the mayor of Laguna Beach, Councilmember Ward, because I was on an Orange County mayor's Zoom meeting call last night at 8 o'clock, and he had a good suggestion to have all the coastal cities collaborate, you know, send their, a letter together with their plans, even if we've already done it individually, but also just come together and with a semi-consistent plan for the active use of the beaches and best practices. So I love that idea, and hopefully, all of you support that as well, because that does sound like what our interim city manager had indicated when he participated in the conference call the other day, that they really want to see, and we're doing that already here. Thanks.
Mayor Pro Tem, I have not seen any rioting in San Clemente yet. I just want to make that point clear.
Thank you. Yes, thanks for clarifying that. Thank you. Oh, and I also want to point out that, that I'm, I signed on as a plaintiff, as an individual in a lawsuit with the Center for American Liberty, and writ was filed, writ of mandamus was filed today in California Superior Court against the Governor Newsom and others regarding the reopening of the beaches. And basically, the claim states that, that the governor violated the state constitutional right to access beaches, as well as the rights to travel and assemble, and did so with zero factual or scientific basis, only a desire to punish a county whose trope toward freedom he views as out of step with his unilateral orders. So banning that, these are my comments, banning people from beaches does not advance public health. And I just wonder what proof the governor has that demonstrates that San Clemente or other coastal cities in Orange County's beaches are less safe than others in the state of California. Our neighboring county of San Diego has far more deaths from COVID-19 than we do in Orange County, and the population county-wide is pretty similar, at about 3.2 million people, yet they're able to keep their beaches open. So it's, it's hit hard with me, and find it to be, like I said, very, we're very singled out for that. And their beaches are very, very busy with people, and I walked for about four miles on Thursday, I'm sorry, Wednesday night in Encinitas, and people were practicing social distancing, just like we do here, wearing masks. There was banners up and signage, and it's working really well. But there were a lot of people, and it works. And yet, we can't go on our beaches, so that's a problem. Thank you.
So Mayor Pro Tem, I have a question for the city attorney, and that question is his assessment of the legal action being taken by Newport Beach, Hudson Beach, and Dana Point.
Very good question, Councilmember James. Scott, could you answer that question? Or give an assessment?
Sure. I'd be happy to do that. I'd be happy to do that, just real briefly. There are two ways that that order might be attacked. One's been mentioned earlier, and that's a procedural attack, where the lawsuit would challenge the directive issued through a letter as opposed to a supplement to the governor's stay-at-home order. So that's, that's one possibility for attack. If the governor lost that, it would be pretty simple to fall back and issue the directive through an order, but that's one flaw in it. As regarding a challenge to an emergency order of the state, the U.S. Supreme Court has given wide latitude. I know this might be bad news to some of you and some of us listening, but in general, the courts defer and give broad, broad latitude to states when they're issuing emergency orders, especially if they relate to contagious diseases. And so I would be lying if I said that these challenges won't be won easily because it will be an uphill, uphill battle to get a court to second-guess the governor's original order. Having said that, it'll be important for the city and for the state to periodically, and really consistently, reevaluate this danger and balance the importance of checking the danger against its impairment on individual rights. So I guess what I would say is that at this early in the game, it would be really hard to set aside the order, and I expect that's a little bit of what happened today. The court would have been looking at which side's likely to win on the merits as part of its decision to strike down the proposed injunction by our sister cities. But as the, as the original order scales, and as the government and other, as the state and local governments could come up with narrower means to address the problem without impairing rights to this extent, it'll be easier to have to, to have to, it'll be, it'll be harder for the government to defend such a broad impairment of rights.
Thank you, Scott.
This is Councilman Chris Hamm.
Please, please.
So one, I just want to commend you, too, on reiterating your Facebook posts, I mean, sorry, Facebook posts, and remind you that not only were you getting paid $175 to come here and reiterate what you said on social media over the past 24 hours, we have two IT specialists here, we have a clerk here, we have an assistant here, and assistant city manager. Our job as elected officials is to lead, be measured, and calm, ensure our community that they're going to be safe and get through, not incite our residents, and change our minds from day to day and have special meetings. So why are we here?
Thank you, Councilmember Ham. Well, you had an option to come or not, so that's one thing. And secondly, you actually called an emergency meeting last night after we already had a special meeting planned. So would you like to share why you wanted to have an emergency meeting last night, Councilmember Ham?
Absolutely, Laura. Thanks for bringing that up. I did bring up an emergency meeting last night before the governor's action was going to take effect, so we could discuss the action before- to take effect, so we could discuss the action before it took effect, not 18 hours after it took effect, like we're doing now, which essentially is useless.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamm. Would your reaction?
Having said, I would like to get, I would like to make clarification on the city attorney, being that you're involved in a lawsuit against the governor. Do you have to recuse yourself if we make, take any action this evening against him?
No, I do not, because I'm named as an individual, not the city. And also, Councilmember Hamm?
That was a question for the city attorney.
I'll have the city attorney answer it. I'm going to him next. Scott, would you like to respond to Councilmember Hamm?
Sure. I assumed that, that you, Mayor Portem, were involved in the effort without cost to you. So you would have a conflict of interest if the city's intervention created a financial benefit to you. But I assumed that it would not lighten any financial burden that you have in the lawsuit.
Absolutely. Thank you. You are right.
So in response to, Mayor Portem, if I may, in response to Councilmember Hamm, I would, I would say, one of the reasons I want to be here this evening is I want to understand from the city manager exactly, exactly what level of enforcement the city is going to have. It's my expectation the city will have no level of enforcement, but this is not the information we're getting from, from people on the beach right now. So I think it is important to understand what's being enforced. And so if I could pose that question to the city manager, I would greatly appreciate it.
Please, City Manager Dunick.
Thank you. Mayor Portem Ferguson and Councilmember James, I appreciate the opportunity to provide additional information that I think also would be helpful for our community to understand, and I think it is responsive also to the question by Councilmember James. As was indicated earlier by both Mayor Portem Ferguson and Councilmember Ward, the city managers in each of the beach cities in Orange County, along with the county chief executive officer and other supportive staff, have been in conversations with the governor's office in, in the Capitol. In fact, we had a conversation today with Mr. Wade Groffler, who is the secretary of the California National Resources Agency, one of the individuals who sent the letter out to each city in Orange County with the beach indicating what those orders would be. And through those conversations and with others that we have been having through the county emergency operations centers, with the sheriff's department in all of the cities, I think it's important for our community to know that the way by which this is being implemented as well as enforced is consistent in each of the jurisdictions along the coastline. So it's the same in Newport Beach, it's the same in San Clemente, it's the same in Huntington Beach. And as we're going forward, we're coordinating those efforts through these various channels of communication. And as respect to the primary question, the, the whole approach that we are taking is one fundamentally of education, trying to educate the public as to dangers that are associated with being stationary on the beach and what tends to occur. And I think this is what calls to the attention, the policy that the council had put into place already, that we had been operating under for a while before the governor's order came out. And that is, after a while, as the beach gets more crowded, you get folks who are not social distancing and we certainly have experienced that. So our, our effort is more of education in trying to ensure that they understand that that could be an impairment to their health. As well then, obviously, we try to seek voluntary compliance with the orders under which we are operating in prior to today, and the governor's order went into operation today. We were operating under a active recreational use of the beach only. No passive uses would be allowed. And we really were seeing, I think, some level of success with that effort. However, it did require at times that we would remind people that they shouldn't be too close together, you need to social distance, and make sure that you're actively recreating so that you are moving and not just sitting or lying on the beach. Obviously, there is still a level that could be in play, and that is one in which a citation may be, I think, issued to those who really aren't paying attention to the suggestions. There's no voluntary, I'd say, departure from the beach, in which case then that is a possibility, but it's up to the discretion of the officer who is enforcing the order. That could be a deputy, it could be one of our lifeguards, it could be one of our park rangers or the code enforcement staff. But that is really something that we have tried not to have as, as an experience. And I would say that in few, in comparison to the number of interactions that we've had with the community, where both education and a request for voluntary compliance is really successful. But I would be anything but truthful, I said, there's always a percentage of folks who might, might decide that, you know, they're still not quite getting the message and understanding that their safety may be in jeopardy. That said, in our conversations today with the secretary of the Natural Resource Agency, it was clear that the state is very interested in trying to get the beaches in Orange County open as quickly as they can. They are looking for a plan and honestly, it is one that this council had already put into place, in my estimation. They did cite San Diego, but I think their, their policy went into place post the one that was put in place by this council that calls for active recreational use and not passive use. It strikes me that based on the conversations that we had today, the state would act very quickly to open the beaches and lead it back to our local jurisdiction to determine how it might implement that. But they, they would act on each individual city's plan, but we are trying to coordinate that across all of the beaches in Orange County. I've been in communication with the city manager of two different cities here on the beach already, and they're, they're asking for the policies that this council had already put into place. So I am somewhat optimistic that we will at least be able to get back to where we were prior to the governor's order. And we will be placing our plan in, in that office by the end of this weekend and hope for a quick turnaround. We've been promised a quick, very quick turnaround and approving a plan if they, they find it to be consistent with the goals to ensure that the COVID-19 virus is not spreading and that we're doing the best that we possibly can to allow for recreational use of our facilities while at the same time keeping our community safe. And, you know, I hope that responds to both the question from Councilmember James as well as this commentary that helps, I think, our community to understand that we are in concert, we are coordinating. And I know that Mayor Portem Ferguson was on the phone last night. I was listening into that conversation. There is coordination with the, the mayors in the county to try and address this in a, in a very thoughtful and methodical manner. And hopefully, based on what we understand from the governor, that the move to phase two is, is not very far away. And there will be a plan that the staff will be distributing and providing for the council to discuss on Tuesday night that does talk about which facilities that our community will be able to open up because we would be going to phase two. The last thing I would say is that with, with the action that the council's taken, and much to the delight of many of the golfers in the city of San Clemente, our municipal golf course will be opening tomorrow morning and it has got a very full tee sheet. And we do have new rules that are in place that will help ensure that that can be done in such a fashion as, as to be safe and not spread the virus. And so I know there's, there's already action that this council has taken to try and address the recreational needs of our community. One additional point, though, I think as it relates to the beach area, the beach trail will remain open. We have considered that not to be part of the beach, so that will remain open, as well as the Seaside Trail is being reopened. And with that, Madam Mayor Portem, I'd be glad to answer any questions that the council might have.
Oh, thank you so much, City Manager Dunick. And kudos to you and staff for implementing such an ideal plan that has worked so well for us and that other cities are looking at. So I appreciate your great work on that and leadership. In regards to the golf course opening, that's excellent news. Thanks for announcing that. And I did see the press release that went out from the city. But regarding the golf carts, I noticed in the press release, we weren't going to allow golf carts. Is that, did I read that correctly, City Manager?
Madam Mayor Portem, yes, I believe that is the case. I'll defer to Assistant City Manager Sun on that issue, particularly as, as those plans and new regulations were worked out with the, of the pro shop. But they're following the guidelines set by the Orange County Board of Supervisors, as well as that within the Southern California Golf Association, as we had talked about in a previous meeting. I think one of the things that we would evaluate is the need to accommodate handicap members of the community who might need a golf cart. But I know that, that we were instructed and were following the orders of the, or at least the guidelines of the county of Orange.
Great. Okay. Thank you so much, City Manager. And Mr. Sun, did you have anything to add to that?
No. Interim City Manager Bob Dunick clearly communicated county guidelines with, supplemented with the SCGA guidelines as it relates to play.
Excellent. Thank you so much.
If I may go back to the beach just for, with Mr. Dunick.
Please, Councilmember James.
So if I understand this correctly, we will not have a city employee that will direct someone off the beach or restrict their access. They will inform people that the beach is closed and, and we have no, no obligation beyond that. I guess that question is also for the city attorney. Thank you, sir.
Madam Mayor Portem, Councilmember James, as I indicated, our first step is to educate and seek voluntary compliance to leave the beach if it is closed. And obviously, as I indicated, it would be within the discretion of the officer or deputy who is involved in that exchange, whether or not further action would be required. But we have not found that to necessarily be the case. But I would defer to the city attorney as to the second part of your question.
No, I would just say that our duty, at least, is to warn people about the order and to warn people about the pandemic. And we don't have any overt duty to intervene in their activity and to enforce the state's order.
Okay. Thank you very much for that great question, Councilmember James, and your responses, City Manager and City Attorney. Are there any other comments from councilmembers?
Yeah, this is Chris Hamm.
Please.
Do we have a motion? Because at this point, I'm not sure what's more of a joke, Gavin Newsom's order or this meeting. Why are we here? Are we here just to inform the public of what you guys posted on social media in the last 24 hours? Or are we going to make a motion and make, take some action?
Thank you, Councilmember Hamm. Well, now, knowing after this meeting, we've learned of the outcome of the judge's decision, not decision, but temporary decision, I guess you can say, with the pending May 11 hearing coming up in court for Huntington Beach and Newport Beach. I would have suggested that we sign on to that, but at this point, I'm not going to make a motion to sign on to that lawsuit because of what we learned tonight. And I'd like to have us just watch this lawsuit and see what the outcome is on May 11. And we heard tonight from the city manager, Bob Dunick, that he will be submitting our procedural plan for the active use of the beach to the governor by the end of the week, which is excellent. I think that will go a long way. So there you go. So those two. And I would like to make a motion to submit a statement to the governor in, just basically combining the comments from tonight, from the council. And, but it sounds like we might not have support for that. We sound pretty divided on this. I just wanted, I thought it would be a good idea to just send a formal letter from our city council expressing our reaction to this order. So I'll leave it at that. Do I have a second for that motion?
Can we have a little discussion on that?
Oh, yes, please, Councilmember James.
I'm willing to make a, a second on that. I, I'm concerned that the, our other two council members will not vote that way, but possibly if we could defer that motion until Tuesday night and actually have a, a draft letter, and I could wholeheartedly get behind that if we actually had a draft of what you're, you're proposing. Is that fair?
That's fair, yes. So I'll revise my motion based on your comments. Thank you so much. I'm sorry, I'd like to make a motion that we bring a draft letter to the meeting on May 5, the regular city council meeting, that expresses our reaction to the governor's order to close all beaches in Orange County.
Second.
Thank you. We'll do a roll call.
Just Councilmember Hamm, I'd like more discussion before we take a vote.
Yes, please, Councilmember Hamm.
So first off, I'd just like to commend you on changing your stance on toll roads, because apparently lawsuits aren't good for toll roads, short-term lodging units or hospitals, but lawsuits are good for beaches. So thank you for coming the resident's way on that issue. As far as the letter goes to the governor, I'm more than willing to discuss it on Tuesday, but being as though we just sent a letter to the governor this week, asking for him to come take a look at our hospital, I'm not sure that we want to smack him over the head with a stick about the beaches the following week. Having said, I'm willing to listen to what you want to say and we can talk about it on Tuesday.
Oh, thank you, Councilmember Hamm. And in response to your comment about not supporting lawsuits, well, this is, quality of life is why, what I hear pretty routinely from you and others about the lawsuits and entering lawsuits. So there's nothing, I think, more relevant to quality of life than being able to enjoy our beaches and have a good quality of life and mental health and physical health in doing so, especially at this time, we've been locking ourselves up for so long, right? So I don't think that was an accurate statement by you, so I wanted to point that out. And also, there's nothing more important either, is our constitutional rights and our liberties as well. So thank you for listening.
Mayor Portem, if I may.
Yes, please, Councilmember James.
I just wanted to address, I, I hear that Councilmember Hamm has some frustration with, what's that? I don't know. Can you hear it? I understand that Councilmember Hamm has some, some frustration with us being here this evening. But for me, from my perspective, I think it's healthy that our community, that our city, that our taxpayers hear a exchange of ideas by council members on something that's very serious, a violation of their rights to, to assemble and, and to, to move freely. There are reasons why the governor's doing what he's doing, I guess. And there are reasons why there are those of us who are concerned about our civil liberties bring it up. So I don't think there's anything wrong with us having been here tonight, having robust discussion, because in my view as well, I thought maybe I would have a motion to, to join with our sister cities in their litigation against the governor. So recent information has, has dictated that we won't do that at this moment. Additionally, I think it was important for us to clarify with the city manager and with the city attorney exactly what role our city employees were going to have in this. So I'm okay with being here tonight and, but I am heartened by the fact that Councilmember Hamm is a fan of my Facebook page. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, Councilmember James.
So Jean.
Please, Councilmember Hamm.
Thanks for, thanks for clarifying that. I'm not, I'm not frustrated by being here this evening, Jean. I'm frustrated by the fact that there's been grandstanding by council members of all this action that was going to take place this evening. And all we've done is set to inform the citizens of San Clemente, which the two of you have done very well on social media. I think Kathy and I have agreed with your positions on how ridiculous. I think Kathy and I have agreed with your positions on how ridiculous Gavin's position has been on closing down our beaches. So other than costing the citizens of San Clemente probably a couple thousand dollars, we've really done nothing here this evening, just like on Tuesday. So in the 10 days that Laura's been Mayor Protam, she's called two meetings, cost the city thousands of dollars, and accomplished nothing.
Thank you, Councilmember Hamm. I appreciate that.
And I am Senator Hatt.
Are you there? Okay, great. Well, I could give some credit to Councilmember James and I jointly calling these meetings. And I think they've been important. To piggyback on what Councilmember James said, there's a lot of questions in the community, and they want to hear how we feel about these matters. So especially this one. And we've seen the emails, you have as well, and the meeting we have tonight here is an important one. And I think we have answered a lot of questions for the people tonight. And it's very important to note that there's a lot of people, believe it or not, that are not on social media, they're not on Facebook, and so therefore, they don't see what we write. So this forum, I think, was very helpful tonight for us to be able to communicate those messages to the people and answer the questions, and give them a chance to speak, because we had some excellent public comments. Thank you. With that said, do we have any further comments from the councilmembers? Would anyone like to make a motion to adjourn this meeting?
Motion to adjourn.
I'll second that motion. Thank you. And let's take a roll call. Councilmember Ward, can we adjourn the meeting?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamm?
Do we get clarification from the city clerk? Do we need to adjourn to the next regular council meeting, meeting which will be held on May 5 at 4:30 p.m. for closed session and 6:00 p.m. for open session?
Thank you, Councilmember Hamm, yes.
Okay. Should we do a roll call again, Councilmember Hamm? Are we good?
Well, that was an appropriate motion and a second, so sure, I'll say aye.
Excellent. All right. All in agreement, we will adjourn the meeting to May 5.
Very good.
Aye?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamm? Councilmember Ward? All right. Thank you, sir. Okay, our meeting is adjourned.